All right, I am Mayor Meg Grenier and as of the six o'clock, I would call this meeting to order. For anyone outside the village staff who is attending this video conference, I would ask if you would please identify yourselves.
Bill Evans.
Eric Johnson.
I will now do roll call of village staff. Deputy Mayor Eileen Nickel.
Present.
Trustee Seth Harris.
Present.
Trustee Diane Foley.
Present.
Trustee Brian Marsh.
Present.
Clerk Don Hannerhand.
Present.
Village Attorney Steve Raffus.
Present.
On behalf of the village board, I would ask all residents that we please keep our first responders, all essential workers, and those affected by this pandemic in our thoughts and prayers. Pursuant to Governor Cuomo's Executive Order number 202.1 issued on March 13th, 2020, suspending, well, a year ago, suspending Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by law that allowed the public to not be physically present at the meeting, but allow the public to listen to or view such meetings via teleconference call or video conference while recording and later transcribing of the meeting. Village of Manans Board of Trustees semi-monthly meeting is being held via Google Meets video conference to protect public safety and welfare during this COVID-19 pandemic. In an effort to conduct this meeting effectively, we ask those in attendance to please mute your microphones. And as we are conducting only essential business during tonight's meeting, there will be no public comment. Any comments previously submitted to Clerk Hannerhand prior to the meeting and deemed essential will be read into the record. Governor Cuomo has extended the Executive Order number 202.1 through March 24th, 2021. And we need a motion to accept the March 1st Board meeting minutes.
I move to accept the meeting minutes from March 1st to 2021.
Second, Diane.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the March 8th budget workshop.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the budget workshop from March 8th, 2021.
Do you want to pick somebody down? They all. I think Renee may need that. So who do we want to say made that motion?
Harris and Marsh.
Okay.
Warrant number 20. General $63,320.94. Water $13,111.04. Sewer $487.50. Seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and nineteen forty-eight.
So moved.
A-roll number 21.
Yeah, hold on. I did, just for clarity's sake, you guys. Diane, you so moved?
The way.
No, he was still going. It was me. He was.
Okay, okay.
A-roll number 21. Eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
So moved, Eileen.
Second, Diane.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
We have two trends. First one is fire training 500 to fire physicals 500. And the sewer fund, the contingency account, $10,000 to engineering, $10,000. That's to pay for the, the I and I, uh, sewer grant that we got. We got the money for it. They decided to transfer the money into the account. And that's the transfers.
So moved.
Second, Eileen.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
I've received a letter from the mayor. She submitted the preliminary budget for 21, 22 for the board and we'll have copies available at the office and on the website. Um, we have a public hearing regarding the budget scheduled for Monday, April 12th, 2021 at six o'clock. Um, we need to introduce the local law number one for 2021, increasing the tax levy limit to over to 2%. You want to read it in Seth or somebody?
Sure, hold on. Let me pull that one up. Which, which file is that?
Local law number ones. You should say local law number one.
I don't see that as a file, but I will find it. Hold on. Here we go. Yep. Um, local law number one of the year 2021. A, a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C. Section one legislative intent is the intent of this local law to allow the village of Manans to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2021 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law, section three dash C. Section two, the authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision five of general municipal law, section three dash C, which expressly authorizes a local government's governing body to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year by the adoption of a local law by a vote of 60% of the said governing body. Uh, section three, tax levy limit override, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Manans County of Albany is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2021 that require, requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, section three dash C. Uh, severability, uh, section four. If a court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstance is invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of this local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order shall, uh, shall be rendered. Um, section five, effective date, this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State.
And we have to set, um, I need a motion to approve to have a public hearing our next board meeting on April 5th. We'll do it right at six o'clock.
I move to set, uh, April 5th, uh, 2021 at six o'clock for a, a public hearing for local law number one.
Second, Eileen.
All favor.
Aye.
Post.
Uh, next thing is the, um, talking about the online payment protection, sure.
All right, Brian, you want to do that?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, the Express Pay is a product, uh, offered by a company, uh, uh, I forgot what the name of their actual company is, uh, but, um, I'll remember it in a second. Uh, it's the payment product that Troy uses. Uh, basically it is, uh, Nicole, Bill, and I had a conference call with, uh, the representative from, uh, from the company. And, uh, it, uh, it, it really is a very simple tool. Uh, they have had, uh, interaction and it is compatible with KVS, our accounting system. Uh, so, um, there are, uh, there's the ability to move files back and forth between the companies, uh, between the village and the vendor that, that does this processing. Uh, there's really only a $15 a month maintenance fee. Uh, that's it. Uh, the cost of either paying bills via an e-check uh, or by credit card are borne by the user. Uh, there's one fee, uh, per transaction. If you pay multiple bills at the same time, uh, we can submit both our tax bills, uh, and our water bills, uh, via this system. Uh, and, um, uh, that's, that's, that's really it. Uh, the, the setup time is extremely quick. Uh, if we approve it tonight, it's basically a couple day turnaround time for them to just basically look at who we are, uh, and what we're, you know, what kind of bills we're going to be collecting. Uh, and then we just basically start to provide them with our financial information, our linking our bank accounts and so on, so forth. Uh, the website is, uh, is, uh, the highest security level that all banks, uh, credit card companies and so on, utilize. It is, it is, um, I forgot what the term is for it, uh, but it, you know, it's the little HTTPS. It means it's secured. So there's authentication that has to go in, uh, when the person is, is using the system. Uh, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty slick. Um, uh, Bill and Nicole, we're pretty impressed with it. Uh, I know I've had great success using it. It's super easy, uh, to use when I pay all my bills for Troy. So that's kind of how we got to looking at it. Um, and, uh, so basically, oh, the, the company's name is Systems East. Uh, so Bill asked me, uh, to, you know, to introduce, uh, supporting, using, uh, Systems East and the product Express Pay as our online payment processor. Um, there is the ability to have a credit card reader at the office if we so choose that would work into the system uh, as if the person was paying online. That there's a fee for, or they can actually, for instance, if somebody wanted to come into the office, uh, whoever's at the desk could take the credit card payment using the System East page right there with them so that they really never hand over their credit card. They just do it right there at the office. So we have all those options available. If, if somebody didn't want to, for instance, go online, they wanted to pay at the office. Obviously, the, the goal is to drive everybody to the online system so that, uh, those payments are processed, uh, more quickly and, uh, without really that, the, the hand touching of the office staff. So it's a pretty slick, split tool and, uh, 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 it'll be great to get it integrated into our website and onto our bills and so on, so forth. So uh, I would like to so move that we accept, uh, Express Pay as our online services product. And, uh, that's that.
And Seth Harris would like to second that.
All favor.
Aye.
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 Post.
I think that's great.
It's really, it's a really, really cool product. Bill was, Bill was a little skeptical at first because he couldn't believe it was so inexpensive compared to what KeyBank had offered us as far as the lockbox. So, um, after we revived him from his shock, I think he, he was very happy with it.
Okay. Well, Brian, thanks for your, um, bringing that to them and the efforts and everybody for, I think it gets us up into the 21st century and, uh, much better for us in the long run. Okay. Um, next on the agenda is um, to approve the police reform report, um, based on the governor's um, directives, we had to submit, have it available for public comment. Um, the comments closed on April 12th, no, March 12th, um, and has to be approved by April 1st. So I have some, six comments were received. Um, if you want to bear with me, uh, we're going to read them into the record tonight and then move to approve the police report. And then, um, after I read them, um, if there's anything that Frank wants to add, um, he can add them at that time. Um, Steve, should I read the name of the person that submitted the comments?
If they gave you the name, sure.
Okay. Um, Greta Worth. Um, I've read the Manan CPPR committee report. I thought it was well done in general, but needed more emphasis on one important area, training. When you look at the numerous incidents nationwide by, of abuse by police, training would have alleviated and outright avoided most of them. I see several important aspects of this. One, the other officers on the scene need to know from their training that it is their dirty duty to restrain a fellow officer who is overreacting. In the George Floyd case of Minneapolis, four other officers instead acted to prevent citizens from intervening. There should have been a little voice reminding each of them that their training required them to step in. Two, training needs to be explicitly refute the military mentality of dominating the battleship space. This played a role in the Floyd case as well. When he refused to get in the police car, it became a contest of wills. The police perceived that it would be a loss for them if they failed to make him follow their orders. When a situation deteriorates to this point, the choice becomes get in the car or die. Officers need to be trained to always consider other options, both in techniques and in resources. In the Floyd case, and again, in the case of the nine-year-old girl in Rochester, when someone won't get in the car, there are certainly better techniques than strangulation or pepper spray. If nothing else, the police could call a van and have several officers simply lift the handcuffed suspect into it. Four, the use of other resources such as social workers is suggested in the Manans report. This too requires training so that the officers can make an accurate assessment of the suspect's mental status and thus know where, when, where to turn the case over to another agency, hopefully before further violent, violence re assaults. Five, another important part of assessment training is threat assessment. This must be taught in a way that is strictly factual and assessing threats. For instance, a possibly armed suspect who is fleeing does not represent threat. And there is no possible justification for shooting him in the back. Officers rationale that we can't be this, we can't have this armed suspect roaming the streets, but realistically, there are many armed people roaming the streets. Uh, the fleeing suspect gets away. The officers need to accept that. They must wait to apprehend him, him next time. Six, finally, all training falls into three categories and maybe more. First and most obviously is the initial training when an officer begins their career. Second is continuous training for periodic refreshers as well as updates to new laws, techniques, equipment, et cetera. And third, but often overlooked is lessons learned training. This should follow any significant incident that occurred or was averted in the department. Um, from Carl Clemensy, if it's, if it's one job I'd never want, it would be a police officer. Kudo to, kudos to you and all cops. I teach students the importance of treating people with respect, especially people in law enforcement, and that you attract more bees with honey than vinegar. That's fresh in my mind because I just said it yesterday in class. The only thing that comes to mind is uh, part of us cut off, some people driving on Manan Road. I love seeing the police cars catching the speeders. Thanks, everyone. Yours, Special Education, Carl Clemensy. Bill Evans, as an involved member of the community, I am pleased with the information provided. I hope this information gets out to all our community members. I would still like to hear from our community with some type of follow-up after plan is accepted and perhaps an annual review and update. I thank all members involved in the effort made to get this document together. I also thank our Manans Police Department in Chief for their leadership and dedication to our community. Nancy Manning, thank you, State of New York and the Village of Manans for allowing public comment on this report. Being residents of the last 24 years, we are very pleased to have our own police department and we can't thank the police enough for all they do. From my perspective, public safety and adequately funding the police department should be the number one priority, if it is not already. Regarding the report, I appreciate the history, demographic information, which was important for the background and context and good for the community to know. I for one was not aware of the rich agricultural history of the village. The 2010 demographic information is very dated. I appreciate that the 2020 census data is not available yet, but if, is there more updated information, even if it is footnoted as preliminary or unofficial? Possibly you are required to use the 2010 data. How are other localities handling this? I like the mission statement very much. Having funding opportunities been pursued in terms of grant funding, et cetera, to convert part-time officers to full-time, assuming it makes sense to do so. Are there sufficient vehicles and other necessary equipment? Proper training for the very difficult job these officers do is critical. It should be funded by the State of New York and be regionally based for consistency, but modified as needed for unique demographics. The code of ethics statement is excellent. I don't know if that is unique to Manans or standard, but I recognize the badge of my officer as a symbol of public faith says it all. The police involvement in community activities is so important and is a Manans strength. I love the idea of police greeting students in the morning at school. The weekly newsletter and public notification systems are important communication tools as well. I can't agree more that a strong business sector environment is very important to village stability and safety. On page 15, the reference to an increase in mental health calls. Is it possible for the report to include the level of increase? This may help with getting more funding for police training. Because of Manans' justice prudence, coordination is obviously needed with police in the city of Albany, Town of Colony, and City of Waterfleet. I think the idea of training officer who can facilitate not only training, but coordination with other departments is a great idea and should be a priority for funding. The defender's demographic table doesn't seem to add up to the 88 total. Regarding Colony Youth Court, my husband is a retired family court judge in Albany County, retired December 2019, and would be happy to help facilitate Manans' interaction with Colony Youth Court where he has an advisory role. Village residents pay Town of Colony taxes as well, and there should be a strong interaction, if not already, regarding training, recruitment, and backup support. Mental health calls should continue to involve the police department. And in my opinion, it is too dangerous for mental health experts, experts to handle without their support. Police access to the mental health professionals seem to be critically important, and the Town of Colony should be able to help with that or join efforts to secure, fund such, um, support. What percentage of traffic stops are substance abuse related? Should that be addressed in the report? The bottom of page 29 and top of page 30 under 10 regarding procedural justice is not clearly written. Is the pay level for Manans officers competitive? If not, I think it needs to be, and we need to work for, towards that. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and thank you for all who prepared this report and especially to the Manans police for their service. Brian Patritas. Pleased to be asked to submit my comments. For 29 years of Manans residency, we have both casual and in-depth dealing with police in Manans. 100% of the time, we had positive, competent, successful dealings. There are regular patrols on our block. A police officer always arrived before the EMT paramedics and pitched right in. When we or neighbors needed detective work performed, it was done so with due speed and good results. All staff and uniformed officers have always been polite and respectful. Susan Stein, my household has a multiracial makeup and I have nothing but accolades for the Manans Police Department. When our family has needed assistance, Manans Police has responded promptly, professionally, and without prejudice. No one in my family considered for even a moment that we were treated any differently because of the color of our skin. Manans Police continues to make my family feel safe, both inside the home and when out and about. They are a visible and integral part of our community. The Manans Police Department is a true asset to the Village of Manans. I would like to personally acknowledge Frank and the Manans Police Department. We could not have had better uh, comments made for the job that they do and the, um, dealings with the community and just how great of a department we have. So Frank, thank you for that. And if there's any comments, um, I don't know if you want to talk about the training that you're trying to get together or anything that you want to, um, respond to in any of that or just make a comment or whatever.
Certainly. Um, no, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with most of the comments. Um, you know, they addressed the training, which is, uh, probably the most part that we needed to address and change a little bit. We had dropped a little bit on training. Um, so we, we found that that's something we need to do. We've already, we scheduled and already had the guys go through, um, one training class already. Influenced by us, it was done at the arsenal by a member of the arsenal who, uh, the guys really, you know, there was a couple parts they had a little difficulty with, but for the most part, they did well and they liked it. They were, uh, mostly positive remarks. We did it with the City of Waterfleet together. And they were happy about it. And I was really pleased with some of the remarks. You know, I wasn't sure how, how it was going to go or what the basis was going to be, but they were really happy with it. So we, we did already have schedule and, and complete that training. We do have more to come. John Favada, Midnight Walker, I, I've had him work a couple day shifts, trying to put it together, keep a log on it and make sure that all the training that the guys do have that we're tracking, because we do have some online training that they're doing individually about different courses. So that's all part of that. And I want to make sure we keep a good track, which we haven't done before, of the hours and the types of training that our guys are doing. I think that's pretty important. I, I kind of wish we did it from the beginning, but, um, we're doing it now. So I think as far as the report goes, I think we, we had a good committee together. You know, we, we were pretty honest about most things. You know, we were open to listening to what people had to say. And I, I guess from what I saw at the meetings, you know, some of the comments were pretty much what we had there. A lot of people have a lot of issues with, you know, certain things with police departments. Our guys, we don't get those kinds of complaints really. We, we are fair, I believe, and we try to treat everybody the same as best we can. And, and I'm really happy with that. And Manans should be very happy that they have a police department like we do because of the guys that we have. You know, it's, it's, it'd be difficult if you had some rogue people that you had to address or keep talking to. We don't have that. And the other, it's very important I want to mention is the fact that we have a mayor and a village board that backs the police department. You know, when we started this, I, I've heard some stories about, um, some other cities or towns that, you know, were under the gun as far as really making changes that didn't apply or had to do some things. We were never there. We, we looked at it fairly. The mayor has always backed us and the, and the board has definitely backed us along with the mayor. So it was, it was a pretty, I don't want to say easy job because it was, it, once we got into the wording and doing that part of it, it took a while, but um, you know, things fell into place and we all came to an agreement. And I think the fact that, you know, the, the job we did putting it together with the types of comments we had, really showed that that was the case. So I'm pretty pleased with it and, and I hope you as the board and the mayor are pleased with it. We all put a lot of time in. The mayor put a lot of her personal time in, as she always does. And, um, you know, I really, I really think it's something we all should be happy with.
Okay. I'm also very grateful to the people on the committee that gave up their time. Uh, we had a wide variety of people from all over, the town, uh, the public defender's office, the DA's office, residents, school people. So we had a great, uh, group that were willing to come forward and help us with this project. Um, it was time consuming, but it was one that was necessary and there was a lot of good, um, thoughts that came out of it. So it, it was well worth it and I'm glad that we were actually kind of told that we had to do it because it worked out well. And to Bill's point, as far as continuing, um, we had a separate committee that we had started, um, having public, you know, community meetings and we want to continue those as well. So now that COVID is kind of relaxing a little bit, you know, we may have an opportunity to get that back in place, um, and start those up again. Because Frank, I know your main goal was community outreach and, you know, we want to continue that as well.
Yeah, definitely. And, and I, I err there by not thanking them. Um, I, I really, they put in their own time and it was not easy some nights because a couple were members of other boards, so they took a lot of their own personal time to help us out. And they didn't have to do that for a smaller community, but they did. And we really did appreciate the input because we had some very smart people and educated and with a lot of experience on that board that really, we needed that knowledge. We needed them, them to come forward and to put these things together and, and, you know, give us some really good ideas. And as far as Bill's point, uh, we brought that up before at one of the meetings that, you know, we want to do that. We want to keep tabs on ourselves and make sure that we are following up on what we said. We just don't want to throw it out there and not do that. And I think especially with the training aspects and things like that, we can show because we'll have, we'll have documentation that's going to show that we are doing it.
Frank, I think, um, you and I should draft a letter together and thank all the committee members for all of their help. Um, get that out to them. Um, and then if the board moves to approve this tonight, um, Don, there's also a statement that has to be submitted with the report that has to go to the, um, to New York State. So we'll work on getting that together. Um, it's got to be done by April 1st, so we have, you know, a couple days to get that in order. Um, anybody on the board have any questions or comments or anything you wanted to add?
Well, I wanted to, um, to, um, really echo what, uh, the mayor said as well as a couple things that Frank said. Um, the reason that, uh, the board has been so supportive of the police is because we have no reason to, to not be. Uh, you've been a great, uh, police chief in, uh, in training them, hiring good officers, maintaining them, and, uh, you know, when, we're, we're the community so proud of the police force that you lead, uh, you manage. And as, as a board member, uh, you know, I, I, when, I know that they're in good hands because anytime that there's anything that we should be aware anytime that there's anything that we should be aware of, you bring that to our attention. Everything's dealt with so well, and that way I know our police force is in good hands. And when I see them, I'm truly proud of Manan's Police, so thank you for that, Frank. And I look forward to continuing to support our police.
Thank you, Seth. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I echo Seth as well.
Thanks, Diane.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve the police reform report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move to approve the police reform plan.
Well, I leave first, so we'll give it to Kylie and Seth.
That's all right. It's, can't be first on everything.
We're gonna have to rock, paper, scissors soon.
I'm okay with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you all.
Frank, don't disappear. We have a matter for executive session.
Okay, I'll hang around. I'm just going to turn off my camera, but I'll be here.
Okay. Eat your dinner without us watching. All right. So we have a proclamation. Seth, if you want to read it, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yep. The Education and Sharing Day, it was brought to us by our local rabbi. And it reads, whereas a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large, and in the village of Manans, we strive for the betterment of all of our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing. And whereas through providing the possibility of excellent education for all, especially children with which to gain knowledge through rigorous study, we can create hope for a brighter, kinder, and more united and prosperous future in the lives of so many. And whereas one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, the Rabbi, Rabbi Menachem Shneurson of righteous memory stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy society, and strongly urged that education be reinforced by the inclusion of strong moral values. And whereas in recognition of the Rebbe's outstanding and lasting contributions toward improvements in world education, morality, and acts of charity, he was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal, and the United States Congress has established his birth date as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas more than forty years, for more than forty years, the President of the United States has recognized and honored the Rebbe's vision each year on that day by proclaiming it Education and Sharing Day, USA. And whereas we presently battle a global pandemic, which has disrupted traditional models of education across our nation, while concurrently motivating a focus on the stronger core values, we wish to impart on children and adults beyond academic achievement. And whereas we can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can make a major impact in this world. And now therefore, the Megan Grenier, Mayor of the Village of Manans, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, to be Education and Sharing Day in the Village of Manans, and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within our community and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. In witness whereof, the mayor set her hand and caused the great seal of the Village of Manans to be affixed at the village board meeting on this fifteenth day of March in the year two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is we have to do three resolutions for the election. Brian, do you have those resolutions? Can you read them?
Sure. Following resolution, that one?
Yeah.
The following resolution moved its adoption pursuant to election law fifteen dash one oh four one B. The general election for the Village of Manans will be held on Tuesday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at which time two trustees and village justices are to be elected for a four-year term to commence pursuant to law upon their qualifications and no earlier than July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I need a second.
Second, Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
The following resolution moved it's that the registrar, the register of those qualified to vote in the forthcoming village election in the Village of Manans to be held at the municipal firehouse in the village between the hours of twelve noon and nine PM in the afternoon on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one shall be prepared by the duly appointed inspectors of the election of this village on registration date, June five, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Shouldn't that be two thousand and twenty-one, right? And be it further resolved?
Yeah. Don, did you update, do the update that I sent to you?
Yes. Didn't it go on there? It's on this one, yes.
So two thousand and twenty-one. Further resolved that the inspectors of elections shall meet for the purpose between the hours of twelve noon and five PM in the afternoon in the firehouse adjoining this municipal building in this village on said date, and which time and place all persons qualified to vote at such forthcoming election and are not otherwise registered may attend and register their names for such election.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
The following resolution to appoint Elaine Havenger head inspector, Lorna McCarren inspector, Geneva Conway inspector, Susan Anderhand inspector, and Nancy Kessler inspector for the upcoming village registration day on June five, two thousand and twenty-one, and the village election on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second, Eileen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. And I just wanted to comment that I had a question about Susan being able to be an inspector. Don said he spoke to NICOM and the Board of Education. Both of them said it was okay as long as his name wasn't on the ballot. Don, maybe as a backup, if you could get that in writing from one or both of them, just so we have it?
Yeah.
Thanks.
The next thing is the letter of support for Five Elmwood.
It was a letter, does somebody want to, does everybody have that, or you want to just read it down, or you have it in front of you?
Yeah. New York State Homes and Community Renewal Hampton Plaza, Albany, New York. Mr. Darren Scott. Mr. Scott, the Village of Manans Board of Trustees supports the efforts, affordable housing projects in the village, in particular, that the village needs to reach more consistent, continuous, sorry, and details for the pilot agreements, and this letter of support is being provided with the understanding that the applicant has indicated a willingness to work through all appreciated local approvals and review process once the project application has been submitted. I need an approval to send the letter.
Submuted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both.
And that's, oh wait, I have one other thing. I asked a mayor before this, Bill Nevins, do you want to talk about the census?
Good evening, everybody. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you, board. Sorry to send this in email. I meant to do it, and I got sidetracked over the weekend. A few weeks ago, I was approached by the census as being the unofficial ambassador for Manans and making sure that we got all counted. They did a follow-up survey with me and some information, shared a bunch of additional information. They also mentioned April thirtieth is the date that the count will be released. Well, I actually know how many people live in the village. It was supposed to be the thirty-first of December, but politics got in the way. That date is April thirtieth. The information regarding any of the electoral tracks are released on August thirtieth. They're very confident that they got ninety-nine point nine percent of the people counted, and the census thanked us for our efforts. Just a brief reminder, the village, the Manan School and the Manan School PTA partnered to make a blast in the village to remind everyone to fill out their census to get counted. If everyone gets counted, it basically keeps our taxes lower, because grant money funds based on the number of people that live in the village. So they thanked us for our participation, and they're looking forward to the next ten years, she said.
Bill, we want to thank you for your efforts, because I know you played a huge role in that, getting that census taken care of, and I know Don helped you and others from school, so thank you for that effort.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
And I know it wasn't easy in a year like this to get through to people, so thank you for doing that, making sure that we weren't undercounted.
Perfect. That's everything I have.
Anybody else on the board have anything? I have a couple letters to read.
Sure. I, real quick, last Thursday, we had another meeting of the committee looking at the story walk, and as I've said before, this is probably the most enthusiastic committee that I've ever served on. Everyone comes with ideas and wanting to get stuff done. We are, we're looking at putting this on the Upper Purple Trail, which if you enter from Park, it's where you take a left and you meander uphill that way, and that's a beautiful spot for it. We are in the process of designing the kiosks on which the pages of the book will go, and we're looking to hopefully have this up at the, knock on wood, at the end of May to coincide with a virtual author visit at the school. So that would be pretty exciting, but we're in the process of working through what we need to build these kiosks, what we can get donated, and we'll go from there. But it's looking pretty exciting, and this could be a great, a great addition to the village for this summer and give our families and children something, something positive to do in the outdoors.
Okay, Seth.
Yes. Is this, is this something you're going to need anything from the department for, my department? I mean, if you're going to have like an inaugural, that's a really hard word. If you're going to have your first walk, you know, I don't know if you need anybody, any of our guys to help out or anything. If you do, just let me know, okay?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We, so we were talking about that, and we would, Meg and I would love to have that. Just with COVID restrictions right now, I think we're talking about having it be a virtual event, so some invited guests, of course, you will be one of them, where we would possibly read it and walk through it and then broadcast it through Facebook Live and the school's YouTube page and all. But in the future, once it's safe to have large numbers together, we will definitely be doing that and certainly having it coincide with other author visits. Maybe the author comes especially for this, and in that case, we'll definitely keep you in the loop, and we'd love to have, have your department participate in that, and both for the presence and for personal safety, as well as just being a part of such a positive thing.
Definitely. Okay, just let me know.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for the offer.
You're welcome.
Meg, did I leave anything out with that?
Um, I don't think so. I think you covered it.
Good. Good. I know Meg was a part of that and has certainly been very supportive, and we continue to move ahead, and we'll keep you posted.
All right. I had a couple letters. I would like to thank Officers St. Jelaise and Braden of the Manan's Police Department for their response to our home during our recent smoke alarm activation. It is reassuring to know that however careful we might be, accidents happen, and the professionals in the police department are checking on things day and night. We appreciate the officer's assistance in a stressful situation. You're truly sweet and sweeney. Bill Garvey, I would like to thank my hero, Brian Marsh, for replying to my letters dating May and June of two thousand and twenty. I'm glad that my new hero in Manans, Brian Marsh, agrees with my concerns dealing with commercial trucks using residential streets in Lower Manans. I wish I didn't have to look at the people, the papers so I could see everybody's faces. Crosswalks with white lines on Brookside Avenue, Harts Lane, Broadway junctions being in poor condition. Twenty-three thousand bridges throughout our nation needing repairs or replacements. Once again, thank you, Brian Marsh, for your one-twenty-nine letter to me. I appreciate it. I wish to bring to attention to the Manan's Village Board.
Huh? Was that verbatim?
That was.
Wow. Very nice.
I didn't add his new hero. He wrote that himself.
Wow. That's, that's very nice.
Bring to the attention of the village board, dealing with bush, weeds, plants, and vines growing in one area between Railroad Avenue and the D and H Railroad. Don, did you read Bill's letters?
Yeah. That, it's on railroad property. They won't let us go up and cut it. It's the one, I told them that several times.
Okay. So we want the public crews to go up and take care of it, but do we just notify the railroad? Is that what happens?
I'll talk to them again. They probably won't do it till springtime anyway. I know it's getting springtime, but they will, probably another month or two, it'll be going now.
Okay. He'd like to express his concerns about north and south part of Oakwood Avenue still in poor condition, because of potholes and needs to be paved. We are aware of that. While driving on Broadway here in Manans, I observed one vehicle broken down on Broadway just north of Route three seventy-eight exit. The broken down vehicle, describes the vehicle, so we reported the problem with Manan's Police. The police dispatcher wrote the report about the broken down car. The police dispatcher told me that he will send a police officer to the broken down vehicle. Three minutes later, while driving north on Broadway, I witnessed that the Manan's Police were right on the broken down vehicle site. I'd like to thank Manan's Police for doing their job to investigate the problem. Well done. Thank you for your time and consideration, Bill Garvey. That is all I have, and we do have one personnel matter for executive session. Anybody doesn't have anything else?
Just the board meeting, next board meeting in public here, and it's going to be April fifth at six PM.
Okay.
I moved to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, right now it's through May, March twenty-fourth. We're still virtual, but we'll see what happens March twenty-fifth if the governor extends that again.
I believe that this, this link runs out at the end of March, but I can, I can adjust that if need be.
Okay. I'll let you guys know as soon as I find out.
Sounds good. You ready for me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I moved to enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Second, Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay. Renee, you can log out, and then you don't have to worry about waiting around, because there won't be any action taken afterwards.
So you'll just have to let her know the time that we adjourn?
Yep. I'll just let you know when we.
I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Renee.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Nancy, we need for you to get off.
Seth, can you take care of that?
Yes. Doing that now. Okay, we good?
Is it just us? All right, Don, stop recording.